The WIC program, we do Clintonville twice a week, once a week generally, twice a month. And then we also do Iola seniors, and we do them once a week. Then we do our veteran, as I said, the Veterans Assistance. Then we do the seniors, WAPACAS seniors through Trinity Lutheran. We do Meals on Wheels in Iola. So we got a whole number of them. And then we have some others, I can't think of right off the top. We do Bethany on occasion. A lot of times we have special requests for, you know, something coming up that we get, like the pig roast, and Bethany may ask us to do some vegetables just for that event, that sort of thing. So it's been a little bit of that idea. If you build it, they will come, you know? If we grow it, it will somehow reach the right parties. And we've done, I think our staff's done a remarkable job finding people in our society or in our community in need. And it's, you know, it's the same old story. There's a whole undercurrent that most of us don't have much contact with. I'm learning as I go with everybody else, and there's a lot of need, and we're hopefully finding it as much as we can.
It appears we know why you had to retire.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it is a great project.
Yes, it is. Thank you for what you do.
My staff does.
I did a visit. Wanted to check out summer school and wanted to check out the new, what do you call it? The WLC, the Thorough Way, the whatever. It was, yeah, it's quite nice. Although I gotta say, I drive a Suburban now, and it was a little tight getting around some of the corners, but, you know, it was fine. I mean, it's well-marked and looks like...
You'll be used to it.
Well, I don't go there anymore, so that's all right.
I'm talking about the Suburban.
Oh, the Suburban. Oh, yeah, yeah.
One of the things we will do is slow down traffic through there, which is a good thing.
I drove very slowly, yeah. Yeah, but it looks great. Went into the WLC, the first person I saw was Dave Krapelnecki, of course. Talked to him, smiling like he always is, and he talked about the R-word: retirement. So we'll see, it's been around a long time. Then I just kind of wandered and looked in some of the classrooms to see what was going on for summer school. There were actually a couple teachers there organizing their rooms and kind of getting ready, which I thought was kind of nice. Stepped into Jungle Safari Adventure, where they were coloring alligators and making puppets. And a couple classrooms that had what's called Jump Start, which is kind of getting caught back up on knowing your letters and reading and those kinds of things. So that was neat, and all the kids, you know, at this point anyway, seemed pretty excited to get back into learning. There was a group of second graders that were kind of working on their reading skills, and I'm trying to think what Mrs. Blondie called it, reading alone stamina or reading independently and actually sitting by yourself and reading a book, which might be kind of a lost skill now, but, so that was kind of neat. And talking to a couple of the kindergarten teachers about four-year-old kindergarten and how, you know, several years ago they didn't see the gap that they're seeing now with some of the students and what they're coming in not knowing and what some of the kids are coming in knowing. So excited to see that program take off and have everybody kind of come in with behaviors a little more under control and learning how to stand in line and all of that. So, yeah, it was fun. Just fun to go back into the school and see all the girls in their little pink dresses and boys hitting each other, all the usual stuff.
Alongside that, I know that it's comments, two unsolicited comments from parents about the new routing of the WLC. Very favorable, very favorable.
I drove over there today with the intention of maybe just adding to the Nattic somewhere because it's funny. So I thought I could go and because I can talk. So I thought it'd be kind of scary for the kids. But I did drive around in a circle a couple times. So if they wonder who was running slowly in a circle around, I did all the rounds and whatever. And it's great. I think it's gonna really work well, and I like the area where the students can all line up, so there's no crossing of lanes or anything. So it was really well designed and it worked. And I hope parents can get used to it. They aren't, I think, they're gonna have to go slow.
As long as we talk about that, would you talk about how you're going to introduce staff to parents?
Sure. At our open house night on August 28th, we will be, like we did last year, we're gonna have all of the class, the parents come in, kindergarten parents first, at 4:45. And we'll be doing a presentation, showing them exactly the route that they need to take, the choices that they have, whether they park or whether they want to drop off on the sidewalk, and what they need to do, what they need to be careful of. And we're gonna do that with all classes separately. So the parents that do come to open house will have a visual. I'll explain how it works and the do's and don'ts. And I'm hoping that will take the bulk of the change, that people can actually visually see it, and we'll start out.
Are you gonna send anything out ahead of time? They might have problems getting in.
We haven't. The sign is just pretty good out there, and I think once they get in, it's pretty easy to understand, but I'm going to put that up on August 28th. I have not sent anything out at this point.
I think the key is the arrows on the roadway. Those are, they're gonna have to be maintained while, I think, so that people know. And, you know, in a snow situation, I think that should be difficult. People are used to it.
Next item, there is a WSB election in Region 7. Anyone's interested in putting their name into that election, let me know. And that's related to, I'll write it down, well, it's related to the October 9th, WSB Region 7 Fall Regional Workshop. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the calendar or future dates.
Okay, committee action and reports. Instructional Committee, Betty.
Well, we met last Tuesday, and there were three items on the agenda. First item we talked about was the transition to new generation science standards from the Wisconsin National Academic Standards. Actually, from what I understand, the curriculum is very different than what we've been teaching and it's part of the language that's changed. And we're changing to the next generation standards in order to help our students be better prepared for the ACT tests and the smarter balance assessments that we're using now. So the curriculum is more in line with the testing that those students are having. The standards are more detailed and the topics are a little more evident. There's more work involved for the teachers to add to all that information, but there's a length of time that they have to accomplish that. And this here, and the science teachers are all on board with it. It was suggested at our meeting though, that when it comes to the topic of evolution, that we use the terminology of changeable to describe the process of evolution. And another thing that's detailed in is global warming is included in this curriculum. They also talked about how parents have the opportunity to opt out of their children for any evolutionary curriculum, and that has always been and will continue to be. They really feel that this will help our students to be more, to be successfully prepared for the testing that they have to go through, particularly for college testing. Second item we talked about was the Gifted Mentality Program, and Mrs. Markon gave us a presentation of that program and how they're updating the program with a little more technology, a little more detail, however the program will pretty much continue the way it is. And then the third thing we talked about was hiring practices and procedures for our district. And each of the districts, or each of the principals from the schools talked about how they, the practices they use in hiring. And so we were informed as to that. We made some suggestions as to maybe how it could be improved or how they're done. And Pat expressed, as did some of the rest of us before, that we look into the possibility of using WeCan, which is a way to post jobs in school districts throughout the state. And then districts are using it, so Dr. Pashin is gonna look into that and see if it could be beneficial for our district to utilize that program. So, that's what we did.
Next item will be, your recommendation is board approval of the Gifted Mentality Program. That doesn't require a second, but in order to hold them. Okay, on the paper? Aye. Both?
Well, it helps when the entire board is at the committee meetings. Next item is the Middle School Cross Country Team Approval. We've had a joint high school, middle school cross country team for a number of years. Since we've had it fifth grade and middle school, those numbers have gotten to the point that the students would be better served by having a separate middle school cross country team, and it's our recommendation that we do that. Mr. Enholm, do you want to just talk briefly about how they'll still work with the high school?
Especially this first year, our coach is our new librarian, Sarah Hanneman, and she's been running with them already. Practice has not officially started, but there are seven kids at the middle school who are showing up every day before practice starts, just to start getting used to running. Practice does start officially next week. And what they do is they just run around town and doing their workouts. They will still go to the high school at times to do hill workouts and practice with the high school team. During, all their meets are at same locations, so they will travel together. The middle school runs first, and then the high school runs after them. So they'll get a chance to see the high school program as well. But the number of kids just will be better facilitated by having their own coach. We have gotten numbers around 30 at middle school level. It's the only game of talent for fifth and sixth graders, and so they really like to get in there and try something. And a lot of them have found it's a life off the skill, as we talked about earlier. You can run with anybody for your whole life, so I think it's been a good addition and the chance to have separate program rather than having to bus over to the high school every day after practice, after school. It's made for a longer day for a lot of those kids.
I got a couple of questions. First of all, do you envision the middle school team to have its own schedule?
All the meets are currently, and from what I've heard, are all the same time. So they go to the same locations, the middle school meets are before the high school meets, but all at the same course.
Correct, and by the time they are. I mean, and you envision that sort of staying the same?
I would think so because of the nature of setting up the courses and so forth.
Okay. And the other thing that I was gonna, does that, do you envision that there being more travel, travel as a team than there has been in the past?
I do not believe so. I think it's gonna be the same as we've had.
The best, they've traveled with the high school team and competed as a separate middle school. So that won't change that.
Right.
That's gonna, in the plan, keep that consistent. In terms of coaches, Carl, will that lessen the need for an assistant coach at the high school level?
No, our numbers are up at the high school too. So we normally hire one coach, and then we, if we have numbers, then we add an additional coach, and that's what we've done in the past.
So even if we take the middle school out, you're still gonna have enough numbers for an additional coach?
Right, right.
The rate for a middle school coach in this sense is $1,577 is what you'd be approving for a head coach at middle school level.
Would there be any need for a secondary person at the middle school if there was a huge number, a huge being, I don't know, 40? I don't know how that works, but...
You know, I think, at least initially, we'll just see how it works, but my, the thought was just one coach will be sufficient and kind of go from there.
We have policy that determines if, when we add additional coaches in high school level, I would think that'd be pretty consistent with middle school then.
Right, I just, I don't know the policy as much as I...
So really, if we're approving it, and we may approve two?
That's possible, right? You're approving a program. Correct, the program requires two, and we'll get two.
And it's already a motion?
Right. That will need a motion.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve a middle school track team?
No, it's a cross country.
Cross country, a second.
On the paper?
Aye.
On future dates, the Tuesday, August 26th is the staff welcome back breakfast. That will begin at 7:30 a.m. in the high school compound. That will be all teachers, support staff, et cetera, who work day in and day out with our kids who will be attending. We usually have board representation, good board representation, and we usually have a board member selected to give the welcome back to our staff. By default, it's the board president, but he or she may say.
Oh, please, somebody speak up.
I guess Steve would do a good job.
I will be gone.
It is a Tuesday, August 26th.
The first day of school that you missed, how many years?
Because we can't.
Because I can't. Sixty years.
That's right, the first time in sixty years, and you have the first day of school.
By default?
I can wait now.
Okay.
Next item is September.
I'll be bringing it.
I bet you will.
September 9th, our regular board meeting, and again at 5:45 p.m. in this room. On October 9th, I want to expand a little bit beyond what was on the agenda. When I was looking up the schedule in the Times today, I realized that there is a Fall Regional Workshop scheduled from 4:00 to 6:00 at the same location prior to the dinner. And that workshop is on a financial role of school board members. That's one registration, and there's a separate registration for the regional program, beginning with sign-in at 6:00, dinner and program starting at 6:30. Both of those are held at the Nina Bridgewood Resort. So if anyone, everyone who's interested in attending either or both of those, please let me know, and once I get an idea, we'll talk about cartpooling. Generally, sent people in the past, but then I'm not sure if we did last year.
We dropped off for a year or two. What time did you say the workshop starts?
4:00 to 6:00 is the workshop, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then 6 is registration, with 6:30 p.m. to dinner and program.
Is that on Thursday?
That is a...
Thursday, yes, I was just...
It is Thursday, yes. Yes. Okay. You'll let us know.
If anybody else wants to, I probably would drive.
Would you go to the early workshop, do you think?
God, I hope not. No, I'm...
Wow.
That is on tape, isn't it?
Do we have to stay for the votes? If you are running, I'll stay.
Because of the candidate speeches?
Yeah.
I don't know if that takes place before the program or after.
Because we are in the minority, and anything that, anybody that we put up never wins. I mean, so there's no sense in staying for the votes?
I don't know the actual schedule.
I don't either. Maybe we could...
Let me figure that out. This brings us board monitoring. And we're going to get, you're going to get your first look at the 2014-15 budget, and enrollments affect that budget. Prior to that, we started with the 2012-2013 audit review. And tied in with the budget is the W4K update, and we'll tell you a little bit about that as well. So can you come over, Mr. Hyatt, for the audit review portion?
Author Ryan Cooper once said, "We have a problem with our audit. Our books are open to everyone." And our books are literally a public entity, and they're transparent and they're audited. The 2,000 accounts are audited every year. The Furman Rivers comes in in June for preliminary audit, gather data, and they stay here for about two days initially, and then they come back for another four days and do another analysis, which really stresses up the staff extra more than I. And they do, and they collect a lot of data over, over the year. This district has a sound, fun balance. It has, it does not tax at a limit. It has health insurance reductions, so we are in a sound financial position. And I thought before you was required the document, before you was required format of an audit. But the reason I'm not gonna go through it page by page is because everything you had at the October, I believe, 9th last year, this beautiful document that was created by myself, and, and the tax levy document, are basically the same numbers, albeit in a different format. So my suggestion or recommendation, if you have any really posing question, now remember this is the 2012-2013 budget, that I can do a personal conversation with you, or I can even hook you up with the auditors themselves if you have some issues that are in this document that you'd like to discuss further. So with regards to the audit, auditors will always have something to say, and one of the things they like to say is, "Do you need more staff, office staff for separation of duties?" Every year we say, "That's nice, we're not gonna do it." They would like to reduce our payings. We say, "That's nice, but there's political impact, we have funds and everything, so thank you." And basically, that's what we say. We want to do the same thing every year in audits. So some of those things are just basically routine, and they're gonna put that in their audit format regardless. So with regards to the audit, that, I think I have a heck of a lot more to say with that document and...
There are a couple things, changes that we made over the years based on audit recommendations. One was the better tracking of our funds, our different funds we have in school.
Absolutely, the activity accounts. Activity accounts, we've, you know, we've made an effort to transfer to those and move those funds accordingly. We've made efforts in our capital projects funds to move those into Fund 49 and Fund 41. We've made enough effort in cash reconciliation, and this is pretty much, I just done every month, and balances. The treasury report is, matches the audit compliance report, so we've kind of made enrollments into getting our district kind of more in compliance with regulatory methodologies of the gap county that's required by auditors. And one of the things is the staff, I guess, is just tremendous, and it's been actually a learning curve, but they basically have really moved into a position that they understand all the county mechanisms, I believe, very soundly, and that's what makes this tick. That's why these books are in order, because of them, and I'm just somewhat of a figurehead of reasoning, and so...
I would go beyond your staff to the staff at high school, middle school, who also had a lot of work to do in channeling those funds, the activity accounts, and doing it the right way. It was traumatic's not the right word, but there's a big change for them, and it's taken a while. It was one of the recommendations that really made sense for the auditors, something we needed to do, and we take advantage, lean on our auditors a little bit to tell people we've gotta do things differently, and that's worked well. And I think all those people who contribute to that need to be thanked, not just in our office, but at the other offices as well.
Yeah, because each year, absolutely, it's tremendous undertaking by all those individuals again. It's absolutely stressful for them because the auditors are here in short time, they're demanding, and then they get in, get out, mess up all the documents that they have completely organized, actually, methodically, and they leave it in kind of chaos, and they walk away. So, good job to all the staff. So that's really all I have to say about the audit in behalf of any other questions.
So our audit of last year is currently being done, they've been in once already.
They've been in twice.
Twice.
And now they're reconciling the books, and they've made journal entries that they suggest each year, and they have not given those to us yet. So wrestling a little bit with, the board approved the two buses, the buses, in, I believe, in December, purchase of the two buses. I'm still going a little bit back and forth with the auditors. Because those buses were not perceived until July 1st, they want to move that money into next year's budget. So I, there's a disagreement, and we'll see who, how that all shakes out. It may take, it may roll our, we may have to roll our monies for purchases a little bit different every year from July on. I'm not sure, they haven't made a final decision on that. That's really the only thing that I can see that is potentially that would change some numbers.
So that's nothing different than what we've done in the past.
Absolutely.
Their accounting of it is different than what they have allowed, or it's said could be done in the past.
Correct, they're being more stringent with that, and that's, that's a fact.
Is that going to affect that decision, ultimately going to affect projecting mill rate for that kind of?
No, it will not. It may just hamper, it may just change the methodology of when we receive buses in the future. Maybe now we receive them all in July, and maybe that's what we do. We'll have to see what their decision is, and perhaps that would be...
The money that was budgeted last year for the buses then will roll forward into next year, so it won't require us to tax that money account.
And it was a method that they accepted for years, and this year it, so we have a change, and wouldn't, I think it's changed unless I can have the work off to make that to get my way.
We'll know that before the budget is due for 14-15.
Absolutely.
Or is settled on the budget for 14-15.
Yes.
And then when is their audit report usually pulled at last, 13, 14? When is that into us?
It probably won't be into, into December.
Okay. Or in January, December.
And this, and I was remiss, and I apologize, this budget audit has been posted on our district website, actually, for months, under Business Services and Staff, so, you know, like I said, so I apologize for that, but basically, the numbers are the same as you knew in October, so...
Is that these?
Pardon? No, no, it isn't. I'd love to say that, but I'm probably...
Who, you give accolades to your staff that helped you? Who is that?
That would be Carol, Linda, and Connie, and that's the staff I have. And, you know, I, I push them pretty hard, and they respond really well to my intent and demand, so they put up a lot, and at least my personal staff that's from there, and they do a great job. I was just fortunate to have them.
And the high school, it would be Joy.
Joy and...
Michelle Weeloff.
Just a couple questions. I know you kind of mentioned the activity accounts has undergone a lot of, and that was one of the points that emphasis was, and I think for the most part, that's great. Just a question, some of the activity accounts, as I recall looking at the wrong list, some of them seem to languish forever in sort of never, never land. What's, what's the stat? For instance, I'm giving a example, the senior class of 1968 still has some money on file somewhere. Whatever happens to that?
Well, there's appeared a time, if that indeed isn't abused, and we contact perhaps the liaison or the individual, then they roll it into the other classes. We notify them, and we'll roll it into the senior class that is indeed here, or the class over, and we'll transfer those funds eventually. But this is, you know, what is a seven-year kind of rolling statute that you can just eliminate it altogether. So some of those assets, some of those handles with the audit, audit acceptance.
Okay, so, okay. The other question that I had was a little bit about the timing in terms of budgetary concerns for staff. I know that there's been some changes, and, you know, and it used to be that, and it isn't about the money that staff was allowed to spend for, for their budgets, but it was the timing that, that has changed. You know, you used to get a budget in early winter, for instance, X amount, and then by the end of the school year, you would spend that amount so that for the next fall, you would set to go. But it seems like that's all moved up, and at least it has, at the high school, can't speak for the others, that many of the budgets need to be done prior to when it used to be at the end of the school year, and many of them needed to be done quite early. The only problem with that, of course, is, and I understand maybe from a budgetary point of view or an audit's point of view, that, that's great, but a lot of times, staff may have changes to their schedule, numbers of students, or even the classes they teach. And so they have to make decisions before they really know what they're gonna be doing in the fall.
So are you saying it's earlier than advanced?
It has been. It has been lately, meaning the last year or two. Prior to that, it was you had to the end of the school year to spend the money that you had, and then next fall you come back, you've got the books or whatever. Now a lot of that needs to be done prior to, or the money seems to be gone.
Yeah, there's, if you look online, there's a budget development manual for all staff, which is, it really kind of lays out the timelines and the methodologies. And one of the things is that, and it's pretty common for some of those, March is when they really start getting that data, March, April, and then there's probably mid-April or so, prior to the end of the fiscal year is that when the principals have to get it back to me usually. What was it this year? Do you guys remember? It was late April or...
It was late April.
I mean, it was May, it was May, actually, this year, May 7th, I think, something like that, for you guys to get it back to me. So one of the things is that preparing a budget for next year, that, you know, those are key cogs to have in place, and those, those numbers, school budgets, I mean, if you're preparing one ahead, there's spreadsheets that I have prepared for them to view. you're preparing one ahead, and the spreadsheet that I have prepared for them to use, is that, pretty much, I believe their budgets probably don't change that much, so they're probably really earmarked at that, they know pretty much what their number is, unless there's a big high school, or if there's a big change internally, because it's site based, basically, they're given a number based upon enrollment, and then they have the word of mouth to separate that, how they see fit, and I think the budgets, from what I've seen historically, is that they basically maintain roughly the same in each department, there might be some changes, so I think they would know that going...
Well, it isn't, again, it isn't the dollar amount that is the concern, in talking to staff, it's, you know, if you get $300 a year for, you know, the last 10 years, you can kinda expect to get 300 bucks, but it's when that money was allocated, and when it needed to be used up, because in, as I say in the past, it was always available until the end of the year for the most part, even into the summer. Sometimes, it used to go to July 1st.
I think we're talking, we're talking about two different things. When, when you talk about expanding your budget, the auditors and everyone expects that your budget this year is spent for materials and supplies you would use this year. You're talking about spending money so that you're prepared for the following year. You wanna spend $13, $14, so you're prepared for 1415 class.
Well, that, which is the way it used to be.
Right, and that's where the auditors are saying, "That money can't be spent in 13, 14, you're not using the goods until 1415," so they're asking us to...
Right, and that, that's where the conflict comes in, because a lot of times, the staff may have a change in their teaching schedule, okay, and so, it isn't money, it's like, all of a sudden, I have a new class, let's just use the example of creative writing, I, I don't have any money now to spend for that necessarily.
But you have till May to spend your current year budget.
But oftentimes, in, you know, in talking to the principals, we don't always know, and the staff doesn't always know what they're gonna be teaching that early.
But see, we're still talking about two different things, you're, you're talking about...
See, they work, they work hand in hand, okay?
So, you're, you're spending money from 13, 14 here, to buy supplies for your 1415.
Well, sometimes because of the creation of a new class, and you need materials, how else can you do it? You can't come September 1st and not have anything.
See, that's the mechanism that account, auditors have been, have for years, for a long time, they're doing this profession, and the seven, the last seven years, they really kind of, they will move that money then, just as the bus example, they will say that, they're spending this money at the end of the fiscal year, so that will be already moved from this year into the prior year, because you're not using it for this purpose. The idea is to use that money for the kids that are plenty anyway. They really, they even question, you know, computer purchases, a place such as that, to purchase in January, thinking like, "Well, you know, what, this should've been purchased in September," just the use, and it's the same with federal funds and state allocations, you have to use it for the purpose of those individuals in that fiscal school year, and if there's any kind of deviation, or it's like, thinking that that's, that's gonna be used for the next coming year, that's when they start moving your books, writing, writing you up for, basically, not inappropriate use of funds, but they just start changing your books, so, and then, so, in theory, 1415 budget should, one, perhaps, a little less, so they would know that they created right class to be coming, so that would be, and then that, those funds to principals, to whomever has that class, and then they're setting aside in their English department to say, like, "Okay, we have this class," you know, how much, I mean, and probably it's a wrestling match for how much money each one gets, if it's site based, but then that would be kind of worked out with, on the side, so that's the reason, I'm not so sure it's a good answer, but that is the mechanism that kind of wore off, I guess.
But I do think the philosophy used to be that we're going to wait till the end of the year, use our budget dollars at the end of the year to buy supplies for the following year.
Yeah, correct.
And auditor, you're saying, you know, "If you budget this year, it's gonna be used this year." Our biggest deal is computers, we wait till the end of the year, and if there's a bunch of money left, we buy computers for the following year, and those aren't even put into play until August or September, and we have some, auditors have some concerns about that, because that's bigger ticket money than $300 a class.
I understand. It's the same principle, though, for computers, right?
Should almost have to buy those computers so they get set up over the summer.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a catch 22, but from a teacher's perspective, we have, we have to get in the idea that the money for this year has to be spent for material supplies for this year.
Well, and I think most of them do that, I mean, I really do, I think most of the staff has done fine with that. It's only when there's some changes that you can see coming, in the department as an example, and somebody might have to do that, and there's that uncertainty, who's gonna pick up that class, and then when you do, where are the materials gonna come from, and how are we gonna get those materials all in place by September 1st? That sometimes is a problem. It didn't, used to be quite so bad, so that you say, we had that money, we used to spend it the way we went, it's a little harder now, so I, I just, I just bring that up as a concern, and I don't know that there's anything else that could be done about it, the way things are, but it is a concern.
Quick question, given that this is posted on the websites, do you audit, do you ever have anyone from the general public calling and saying, "I have a question about page 64," or about...
I would, I would say, not in this district.
Yes.
Not in this district. In our district, yes.
Can we move on to the first look at the budget for 1415?
Before you do, I do have one more question on this one, I think.
Sure.
That is, realizing this is somewhat dated, and there have been actions taken since this was, this period of review. Excuse me, there were some items that may not have been considered, but there are some matters that indicated in here for the status, this remains an issue. Has there been some, any others that have been closed out or resolved?
Um, yes, I believe everything's been closed out on this document, except for if they're asking for additional staff, for staffing, the separation of duties with the federal funds, I believe that's in there, and then the aspect of the bank, reduce, reduction of banks has not been done. But every other issue in there has been resolved, this year's disaudit, and...
Capital asset addition, capital assets, etc.
Absolutely. You're welcome. So, before you, you have, this is a budget snapshot of the coming year, and the document is basically, the snapshot is analysis based upon this year's budget, um, Fund 10, we're just dealing with Fund 10. And if we were to, if you're looking at this sheet in front of you, this is the sheet that the legislature has posted up at, at the board, and, so, here's the 22, oh, sorry, there's a 22 million, 47786, and if one looks at just the first column, which is salaries, the salaries were approved about 1.5% increase, so we move that forward. We know health insurance reduced, it was reduced by 3%, so you move that forward. The WRS is about 6.8%, that's the figure we're using. The other fringe, which is FICA, social security, security, those, those type of things, and other things, and that's basically the main salary fringe component. The non-salary includes utilities, which were, our budget was okay this year, but utilities skyrocketing, and so, one's looking at utilities, things such as that, using a 3% inflationary figure, it, used in the past, it's, I believe, the safeguard, that's how we get, we move that figure from the budget. These yellow items, basically are the differential of this year's budget. Now, we know we added 4K, and 4K is about $247,000 additional to an expense that we didn't have prior. We know that we believe the busing, worst case scenario, would be about $61,000. We added, we talked about the WLC parking, parking structure in the playground, that's about $250,000. So, if you add those three items, just those three items up, and I'm gonna come back for that number, those three, three items, not the $200,000 ACA, the Portico Care Act kind of placement we've had for a few years, because we know that, that deal's coming too, but it looks like 2015 now, so we want it better safe than sorry, but we have it in there.
So, we budgeted that money, 13, 14, and didn't spend it, so that money's rolling forward.
We're rolling that forward.
So, it really isn't one in addition, it's separate from the next three.
It's separate from the next three, correct. So, but if you add the next three, we're into about a million dollars more in money. 247, and I have another number if I had to, to get to the million, the 61,000, 250,000, but what happened is, why I'm adding another $500,000, and you've read about it, is once again, the general aid for the school, the district of La Paca, is projected to be reduced by $500,000. Well, where do we get that money? We get it from the taxpayers, if all things are equal. So, if you add the 500,000, the 250, the 61, the 247, that's about a million, million dollars, right there, into that. And I think, as you move forward, well, I'll move to the next sheet, if you flip the page, the bottom page, you can see that, oh, I'm sorry, big sorry, first page, if you look at the general aid loss piece on the bottom here, and you can see that's about $4 million over, over this amount of time, 3.9 million dollars, right here. And now, you look at the tax, taxes that we've used to, the taxes we've had to compensate that loss in general aid, that's usually what you do, to equal it. Well, we haven't compensated that total loss, if, even with this projection, it's about 700, 115,000 dollars less than the general aid loss, using this projection, this year's budget. If you go back one year, it's a million nine, that we not kept out with the, the general aid loss, that's what I'm saying to you. So, now this year, yeah, I told you about the million dollars additional expenses, you can see that, while the taxes compared to last year are a million two five five higher than last year in Fund 10. So, basically, the variance of that tax increase, if you take the 500,000, the WK, the 4K, and then you take the parking project, all of that, it's $198,000 really differential. We can't control the general aid, no matter what we do, we try to maintain it. Now, if I flip to the next sheet, the next sheet down, you can see, if you flip to the sheet, we're still not operating at full revenue cap capacity, we're still not, we're 1.8 million under the cap with this projection. And you can see that, over the years, we're projecting that the property valuation is going to maintain, maintaining, so we've had property valuation reductions in the past, and we know that directly affects the mill rate. Why? I mean, does it make any sense? Not really, but it does. So, as that property valuation decreased, we know that the mill rate then goes up, so constantly, but here's the crazy part, and we've talked about, the crazy part about it is that our property valuation has not declined as much as the state average, so consequently, consequently, we will get less than state aid, so how does that compare to a New London, or some other, or a Mecklenburg? You know, who am I to judge, but it really does not make a lot of sense in that theory, but this is the way the mathematical principle of this formula works, and that's what, what is, is. So, if you look at what we're showing here, there's scenario one, if we were to tax to the maximum, that would be 17 million, we could tax up to 17 million total tax, allow full revenue cap. We tax 1.8 million, and try to, that would be 15.898, which is down here in the column. If we went to basically last year, it'd be 14.988, but roughly, we would have, we would be really in a deficit spender term, we'd have a million dollars, that million two, we would never recover, we could, we'd be operating so much, so much in a hole that it wouldn't make sense. Now, if you go back to the first page, you can see that this year's revenues, and it's probably in the, we're projecting this year's revenues will be $277,000 less than the expenditures still, still with this budget. Why are we doing that? We're kinda going back to the concept I talked about a long time, we only take what we need, that Native American property. So, we're saying, we believe we're gonna come in with $277,000 to the good this year, better than, better than anticipated, which is a good thing. So, we're not gonna take that all back, we'll take $277,000 less, to kinda neutralize that concept, to take what we ended up in potential surplus this year, with, do a deficit next year, and then, basically, that would net off the balance of the budget. We're not asking for any, in this snapshot, remember, it's a snapshot, it's preliminary, last year, we had the same scenario going on, they said we were gonna get less in general state aid. By the time October came around, the certification of general state aid, October 15th, we had more, we had actually $28,000 more. So, this is just a brief snapshot of potentially where this district could be heading with regard to fiscal, fiscal position. We're still in a good fiscal position, you can see, we're not, we have a million eight, basically leaving it on the table, but having the $500,000 less, and four million over those month, to the years, not recouping that, we're getting to the point that, we're recouping some, we're still $715,000 less than that, we've never quite recouped the whole scenario, but who doesn't hurt? It hurts the taxpayers. We're not, in this snapshot, having anything applied to OPEP, we're not having anything applied to any Fund 41 future debt, and we're not having anything except for paying down our debt, which is on the second page, you can see that has stabilized, we only refinanced the debt in this district, we're gonna get to a point that we stabilize that debt every year, and then it would start to drop. Next year, it will start to drop that debt service payment, but not if the general aid keeps dropping, you know, you can't recoup, you can't make up for the differential. So, this is kind of the snapshot of it, and...
The bottom line is, the person with a $100,000 house, what is this budget saving?
$92, I think, $92 or $97,000 increase in taxes, for a home, $150,000, $138,000, for a home, $200,000, $184,000, for a $250,000 home, about $230,000, that's what it says.
With the snapshot?
Correct.
With the snapshot. So, if in October, the numbers change, then obviously that number may change.
If, if our property valuation increases, and our general aid increases, yes, it will change, it's all based upon that.
When is our debt okay?
2018, 19.
It's earlier.
We're already in 1415, so that's four years. A couple of things, number one, last year, the governor took special action to take surplus and give that back to the schools, and that's what gave, took us from that large deficit in state aid to an increase of about $28,000, I think, or slight, slight increase. I've heard nothing of the sort this year from the governor at all, so I don't wanna get your hopes up that what happened last year will happen again this year, because I think that was special occasion at that time. So, I think we need to think of that $504,000 reduction in state aid as a pretty real number, it's, and then we have to find a fourth. I have thoughts that I have, the playground, the $250,000 is going into the road construction and playground, so that's a one-time cost, so we do have to tax for it, we have to pay for that, but come next year, we won't have that $250,000 one-time cost again, it couldn't, could help us work the other way for next year. Same thing with the startup cost for 4K, W4K, this year, we don't get aided on that money until we spend it, so this year, it's all out of our pocket, next year, we start getting aided on the numbers that are generated through the enrollment. So, there are two large sums of money there that are, to me, are one-time expenditures, that we have to fight the bull and pay for them, and next year, we take them, those types of expenditures out of the budget, and that's, that's the point. This is not a budget hearing, no, this is just to give you a brief introduction of where we're headed, we will have a finance cleaning meeting to go over the budget again, as we have in the past, and then we won't have our final numbers ready, or due until October, when we get the property value numbers by October, so we'll have a budget hearing then, as we always do in October. In the meantime, we'll be looking at these numbers, we'll be sharpening our pencils best we can, and bringing you updated information as we move towards October.
What happens in 2019, in the head of state?
I think there's a technical answer to that, technical answer is that we no longer have the ability to tax in Fund, in our debt service fund, so we lose the ability to tax at 3.0, $3 million, $4 million, wherever that payment is. So...
What does that do to the property?
Well, it will save them that, that money. It will, it will come directly off their property tax bill.
So it's substantial?
Yes.
Unless there's unforeseen costs and things that make them up.
Yeah, it's not mandatory that it has to be dropped.
Mandatory that we can't tax for it through debt service. We can then increase our Fund Ten tax.
Correct.
So that taxpayer sees no change or sees less change.
Right, or for other projects over there.
The taxpayers could see a change.
They are.
Yeah, I would think so too. I'm just, I'm just wondering how that all would, I would think.
The other point I'd make, though, when we talk about property values here, when we get those property values, the tax rate will change, but the dollars we need to collect will stay the same. So that's not, if our property values go up, it might change the state aid formula a little bit. But in terms of, we still need to collect that amount of money, it's just that the tax rate will fall plus ten.
So, so like, the bottom line to property tax, owner of a hundred thousand dollar home, and we kind of got that question answered, but projecting to the next fiscal year, are we always, and I say always only because nothing's very certain anymore, but within a year or two, always looking at going to have a reduced state aid under the present program? I mean, are we looking at another five hundred thousand in a year from now?
Three years ago, I would have said, no, we're not looking at following year. Every year, I hope that it's going to level off. I had no, no way to anticipate a five hundred and four thousand dollar reduction this year. So I, I can't tell you that answer. Our, our belief is that our property values are declining less than other property values across the state. That's why you see districts like Mequon, did you say, and the New London, where their property, Mequon had real high property values. They're continuing to come down because they were probably over-exaggerated when they were high. They continue to come down. Ours are leveling off, staying the same. Perhaps they'll even go up a little bit. So any money less, they need more money because their property value is decreasing. It's a set sum of money. That money's got to come from those whose property values are staying the same.
I see.
New London has probably had a decrease in property value, a continual decrease. They're getting more aid. However, if you notice, New London's getting more aid, but they're also talking about referendum to see the revenue cap. So we're getting less aid, and we're still not talking referendum. We're in a good situation. To let the taxpayer know or convince the taxpayer that their taxes are going up, but we're in a good financial situation is a tough sell. No matter how good we're, we're in, it's still a tough sell. So I can, I can answer your question. I didn't expect a decline this year. I don't know at all next year.
We have what we believe is a hard number on the four K.
Um, yes, we're going to talk, can we talk about that right now? Let's, let's move into that.
Hundred and twenty-five as of today.
That may change slightly, but that's the bulk of it.
Yes.
That's who, deadline is passed for registering.
Well, we would still accept registering.
But we still would if we moved in or if they came and changed their mind.
In the future, Dave, after we have this program up and running, are those students, are we giving the dollar amount the same as any other student?
They only count for a point five or point six. Point six people are including Friday. So they count as a point six student, oh, six tenths of a student.
So, so a hundred and twenty-eight would be about, yeah, okay, it would be sixty-five students who deserve a cash account.
The problem with that, those who are not taxed to the max, so, so...
But in terms of state aid?
State aid will get some more state aid on that.
Right. You're talking about the revenue cap formula, which, since we're not taxed to the maximum, it doesn't...
I was going with that question, yes, on state aid.
State aid, we will get state aided on those kids.
And that would be in our next cycle?
It would be in two thousand fifteen, sixteen state.
Right.
Can you talk a little bit about what centers are being used and...
Been really busy every day on the phone with, our number one priority and our focus is always to accommodate parents. First of all, in their, in their choices, and if everything we can do to get, get them the choice they want, and also be businesses in our community.
The choices are two choices, though. Where they want to attend, whether they want morning or afternoon, so it's complicated.
And also keeping the businesses strong in our community is our other focus. So it takes a little flexibility, but, but those aren't focuses. And, um, yeah, what is it?
Sure, sure. So we are working with Sunny Day, will be one of our sites, definitely. The Learning Cottage, Tiny Treasures, that's at the Lutheran Church here, Head Start. We will have a site, morning site at the Chain Elementary, and a morning and afternoon site at the WLC. We're unfortunate that the Opaqueca preschool had to ban out, and they had dissolved as a, as a preschool. They just couldn't financially hang on there with their three-year-old program as well as, we had the numbers for the four-year-old program, but they just couldn't financially sustain themselves, so.
They were in it until about a week ago, preschool.
And are all the teachers at all those sites certified teachers that would be part of, are part of our district or will be employed?
All the sites, they have to be certified, even if they are...
But they're not employees of our district.
They're not employees of our district?
No.
But they still have to be state certified for the four-year-old.
Even the teachers at Chain N WLC are not employees of the...
They are.
They are.
Yes, but the ones at the sites, the sites are hiring their employees, and we're compensating them for...
So do you have enough sites? Do you do it with preschool back and out?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
How many do we, as a rough percentage, of what we have at our facilities versus...
There's usually about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty-some in first grade right now, fifty kindergarten. So a hundred and twenty-five is the, you were expecting of all.
But we're saying, what he's asking is there about twenty-five percent of the population in our school, and seventy-five in the sites?
We know Sunny Day has two sessions. There are, there are five sessions that are in that district and three sessions that are in that district. And they each have a couple of average of eighteen students. Trying to keep another balance between the different sites. So a total session?
Is there a maximum number of students? Does the state give us a maximum?
It depends on the licensing for, the childcare sites are licensed to twenty-two and twenty-four, depending on their square footage. And we are going by our stage guidelines, which is eighteen in school buildings. So, and we did have a minimum of a night to make it financially possible. Minimum time for the maximum state guidance.
State's not forcing us, eighteen-one, we're voluntarily saying, say, the stage numbers, we're going to stick to that. We could go twenty, twenty-two, state wouldn't limit that, but we are.
And Rhonda, are you quote-unquote the principal of the K four?
Well, we are the co-directors.
Okay, so you're, so that you're kind of, so you'll be kind of visiting the different sites periodically? Or they'll come to you, I'm not quite sure how that...
Well, they have Fridays for their day for both staff development and planning for the family outreach. So one Friday a month, all of the teachers will get together for staff development and...
Even those, even those who are not our, our employees?
Yes, because they're using the curriculum that we are designing, that we purchased to manage the standards. So they'll be coming training from, actually, next week or two days.
And is, is four K four times a week, four days?
Yes, Monday through Friday. How do we get it counted on the third Friday, though? One month?
September.
We get to do Thursday instead. I never thought of that.
We will, we won't miss that opportunity. We'll find a way, we'll find a way to do it, yes. Perhaps we can write, I think we can write for an exception and make it Thursday.
Have you seen anybody at a daycare site that wants their kid to be bused to an actual school for the four-year-old kindergarten?
I guess I could look that carefully and see about the bus.
I know that there were a couple of families that were considering their, their attending Sunny Day, that would like to attend Tiny Treasures, and they've done that in the past, working things out, and, um, so I don't know if they'll continue, be able to continue with transportation.
And the four-year-olds will be riding the bus with the regular students?
How many of the have signed up for transportation?
Right now, a hundred and twenty-five. I know ninety-eight actual rooms, but those, I only have thirty-seven riding buses.
Do many of them have siblings who also ride the bus?
There are a lot of siblings.
So how many routes are you putting on to...
My plan is to add four routes that are all day. The normal four K kids and the regular, regular route buses in. At ten forty-five, there'll be two extra take-home buses and two buses that we'll bring in. And the PM, just the regular route buses, let's say. And we'll just have to staff those buses out at the, out, uh, sites, sub-day, Head Start. So, so the buses will start there in the afternoon, and then transport the kids to the middle school so they can transfer to the normal PM buses at the afternoon.
I have a question. The, the teachers who are on our staff, our employees at the site, obviously, they'll get paid according to our schedules. What about those who are not?
They do not get paid according to our schedules. Oh, our site does.
Yeah, yes.
All sites, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so how, how are they paid? Are they paid based upon just a flat fee or experience, or how are we paid?
Well, according to their, the site contracts, there is a set amount that the district reimburses for salary, but at that point, it's out of our hands, and it's up to the site to decide how much that, who will go to their teacher, how much will go to surprise, how much will go to, and so...
So it's a, it's a, it's a just a stated dollar amount, and then they distribute it as they see fit? And what, what happens on those sites if, in fact, a teacher needs a substitute, for instance? Are they responsible for that, or do we have to be responsible for that?
We're jointly sharing responsibility. We have a sub-list certified teachers, so we will provide those, those names. And hopefully, with some of the teachers being half-day teachers, they can sub the other half of the days, but hopefully that'll work out.
But if they have a teacher that's sick, they're responsible for getting that person in and paying that, so...
But it needs to be certified first?
Yes, and if they want to use people off our list, we'll share that list with them. But if they're, they want to be responsible for, that, we should give you a copy of that site contract.
Yeah, I mean...
And that spells all these things.
Okay.
It's quite a lot to see.
Yeah, sure.
I'm very encouraged by the start. I know it's done a lot of work for the secretaries as well, the mayor, the Marcon, to get this thing rolling. It's a lot of hurry up and wait for decisions and deadlines and things like that, but I'm excited about the start. I think it's going to start smooth, and once we're up and running, it'll be a lot easier after that.
Speaking of starting, excuse me, is the calendar for the four K the same as our regular school calendar?
It is.
With, I mean, I know they're not going on Fridays, but other than that, the calendar's starting...
And they're only dismissed, they do not have, and they could, the sites could technically say, we're going to make this a day because they're open anyway. Even when, if we have a snow day, they could technically have class, and they'll be responsible for communicating that to the parents. But in general, not that really dismisses days.
Well, I might like to add to the budget discussion. I'm sure that would note some, we have made a decision to look and hire an RN for the next school year, an additional RN. So we'll have two, two RNs for next year. Couple reasons, but I've looked into the LPN and talked to a number of people, and we decided to go with this route. We think that eventually there'll be a transition from current school nurse to another school nurse at some point. And it would be nice to have that person on board now to make that transition easier.
If the current school nurse were to say retired, would you hire another nurse to work with the new nurse?
We would be open to that. It, it just depends, different nurses do things different ways, and so I wouldn't say automatically, but indeed is there right now, based on how we provide services right now.
Good idea. And that person we were trying to get for the beginning of this school year, is that correct?
Application deadline is today.
Oh, okay.
We'll start interviewing and getting people.
Did you have a question?
Sorry. Do you have applications? They didn't come to me. One came to me because they delivered it, but they were to go to Sue Woodland, and she was already where there are three or four people who would be interested in the job. So it's not going to be a lack of applicants. There will be a good number of choosers.
Will a school nurse be responsible for any issues at four K?
How do we work that out?
We looked at the language of the contract, and the Slidliff was very insistent that we even add another addendum to the contracts that for daily first aid and daily normal student healthcare needs, they're trained people at the site to take care of those. Our nurse has to be responsible for having a file of immunizations on record, and, um, any severe, severe health needs would be located in, in the school building.
And that was part of our placement decisions as to who's going to the learning center instead of the site, et cetera.
Do you have any special needs kids that are chosen to go to four K?
Oh, yeah, actually. We have thirty-one special education students identified.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, right. And that includes some for the more severe, two students who are just receiving speech and language and maybe just even articulation concerns. So the students that are just receiving speech and language, we are, the speech and language pathologists are going to those sites. Yeah, probably daily visits, or at least four times a week to deliver the services. The more severe students with special needs are going to, the site will be WLC, and they'll deliver their services. Because that's where we have our OT and our PT as well. The school nurse will be there, so.
But this is good?
This is really good.
I mean, you're starting these kids...
Early intervention.
Marina, are you anticipating any larger percentage of students who may be aimless with second language concerns? Or about the same as any other group?
No, power numbers and...
Pretty much the same as, as that kindergarten class?
Okay, looks like we're twenty-five minutes.
Thanks for all your hard work. I can't imagine, it must be really, really... It's been really fun. It's been great for our little community, and we're really excited about it. But still, that is a huge task, thanks to you and your staff for...
I think it's really exciting that we are getting them a year early and how much better or whatever you'd say, we get them, get them going through here.
Yep, assuming the same one, the same amount of space as I do on here is...
Oh, he'll be really happy about it.
Which one are you looking at? Darrell?
No.
Cost more, right?
We think about the work they do, but think about what he has to remove or what else is not. No, I mean, guitar, until, he still doesn't even know.
He still doesn't, and he's been very patient with him.
What's his choice?
Robby, you're wearing a lot of hats. So to be a principal curriculum in four K, that's really noteworthy. So thanks a lot for your hard work.
I'm not bored.
What's the term? What, did you say you were bored?
I said not bored.
Oh, okay, I thought you said there was a four.
Consent it to the... Is there a motion?
Some.
Is there a second? Is that the first?
Second one.
Roll call, vote. Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Cat Barrett?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Kirsten Gredefield?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
Stephen Channelwood. Motion carries seventh.
And just one question, is there any other hiring to be done, other than, we talked about the nurse tonight, the site manager? Everybody's at...
We have a four K, halftime four K at the Chain School, but we're still interviewing. I did, I met someone for first grade this afternoon, met with them, so they're not on the agenda, but they were hired today.
Oh.
I've got, I have a halftime math person to hire yet.
That's right, yes.
And a specialized elementary teacher that will be interviewing four of them on Thursday.
So in our next agenda, our next meeting, we'll get any of the...
Roll call?
No.
Don't forget veggies, got to take veggies with you in that.
Hallmark Baker? Thank you, everyone.